Uh, thank you everyone for joining. I know we're being recorded. Uh, thank you Shannon for getting us set up tonight. Uh, I'm Eric Moore. I'm the Chair of the Town Meeting Study Committee of Concord. Uh, and uh, tonight is a subcommittee meeting, so to speak, with a focus on logistics. Uh, I will clerk tonight since we're recording, it's, it's, it's easy enough uh, for me to do it. I'm actually haven't done it yet, so I want to see what it's like. I'm gonna take role um, uh, and um, yeah, right. So please just, uh, I'll call your name and please say, uh, please say you're here. Uh, Keith Bergman.
Here.
Hi Keith. Uh, I'm not expecting Katie tonight. Um, uh, Kristen Haggerty, I see you. Would you say that you're here, please? Thank you. Uh, not expecting Alice Kaufman tonight uh, for the subcommittee. Uh, Leslie Coplo, uh, are you here?
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Eric Moore here, uh, Parashar Patel.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Phil Swain.
Here.
Uh, thank you. And uh, I do not see Eric Van Loon. Um, so again, I'll be clerking tonight. Uh, uh, and um, uh, we're gonna move to public comment. Uh, again, you know, limited to fifteen minutes for up to two minutes per speaker. Uh, only folks to see of the public would be, uh, uh, hi Katie. Katie, would you just say that you're here as well, please? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm here. I, I think I just signed on, so I missed it.
Got it. That's okay. Uh, uh, thank you for joining. Um, so do we have any public comment tonight? Uh, David, I see your hand raised, so uh, uh, two minutes, please. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Eric. Um, you may or may not have seen mine at the end of uh, tonight's packet. Uh, if you have, uh, you'll probably not be surprised at the suggestion I'm about to make. It's always nice to know where we're going, or to put it a bit more precisely, to have a criterion to judge extent to which we've got there. I'm going to suggest one that, uh, I realize may or may not be shared, but here it is. It's that the overall objective be to improve our democracy, uh, in this case through the appropriate functioning of this institution town meeting in our local democracy. I have no doubt we'll have, we're gonna come back to that. I'll, again, I want to suggest that, uh, as you put things together and judge progress, uh, measure it against the extent to which our democracy in the form of this legislative open town meeting is improving. Thanks very much, Eric.
Great. Thank you for your comments and, uh, uh, thank you for bringing the email to my attention. I don't think I'd seen it, actually. Uh, I must have missed it, so I apologize for that. Good, thank you.
No, you did, you did see it because you came back to me and it said, it's at the end of the packet anyway. It's there.
Oh, okay. Cool. Thank you.
For any, and those who don't want, anyway, thanks.
Um, any other public comment? Uh, uh, I think you only get one turn, David. Thank you. Uh, okay, uh, good. Let's move on. Um, so, uh, we have a quorum tonight, so let's move into, uh, approving minutes. Um, uh, we have two sets of minutes. The first are from, uh, the June fourth twenty-four, twenty-two-four meeting, uh, prepared by Phil Swain. Uh, I guess, uh, I'd like a motion to, uh, begin, uh, to, to entertain the, the task of approving minutes, please. Uh, motion. How about a second?
Second.
All right, thank you.
Do we say that's for the June fourth and the June eighth? Are we doing them both at the same time?
Oh, wait, let's do them one, one at a time, just in case there's something to talk about. Uh, Eric, I see Eric Van Loon, I see that you've joined as well. Um, do you need to be recognized right now? Um, uh, you're on mute, Eric. So we're actually all here, uh, except Alice. Um, all right, when I proceed, uh, so, uh, uh, I'm gonna begin discussion of the June fourth minutes. Is there anything that people need to talk about? Uh, Katie, I see your hand raised as well, please.
Yes, I think there's just one place in the minutes where I think it says Kristin Bresnik. So mixing Kristin and my names together, so I, I can't remember exactly where that is, but I noticed that. Um, I can, I guess, um, should I send an email afterwards? I'm fine doing it as is.
Uh, okay, so was Shannon McAndrew. She, she said she can fix it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, cool. Uh, thank you, Katie.
Eric.
Uh, yes.
So, uh, I wrote these minutes. I apologize for that mistake. Katie and Chris Nick, uh, Kristen, I'm sorry.
No worries at all.
But, uh, I just did wanna point out to everyone that when, when you do eventually get around to doing the minutes, um, Shannon will send you a AI-generated summary of the meeting. And, uh, I found it actually disappointing because it, it, although it did a very good job of summarizing the meeting, it didn't really focus on the the issues per se, just kinda, you know, uh, it, it summarized minutia and, and other things that weren't that important, but it's amazing how much it, it does do. But it did do a good job on the, at the beginning, a general summary recap. So that is something that I basically pasted into these meetings. We don't need to include it. It's generated by AI. I, I revised it a little bit, but I thought it was a pretty good summary of the meeting, so I included it. But I just wanna let everybody know, that wasn't something I wrote. It was just something I adopted from the AI thing. Otherwise, I basically, uh, wrote the, the minutes as I took them as notes.
Got it. Good. Thank you.
But I think that, yeah. Somebody reading them.
Yeah. Um, I'll, I'll comment as well. You know, one of the benefits of, uh, using, uh, doing an all Zoom meeting is that uh, the transcripts that are generated and the summaries are, are, they're, they're better when they're able to be scoped or, or sort of specific to what, what I'll call speaker terms. In other words, when Kristin says something, it knows it's coming from Kristin's microphone. And then it's not as if we're all sharing one mic, so that, that, um, is a real difference in the quality of what, what uh, the Zoom transcription and summarization stuff does produce. But you know, the obvious, the obvious comment, Phil, of course, it's just, um, there's a lot of, you just never know what, what, what's in there as well. So I think, you know, it's incumbent on all of us to, to give it a real hard editorial review. Um, any other, thank you. Any other further discussion on the minutes from June fourth? Are we ready for a vote to approve? I see no other discussion, so, uh, I guess it's a roll call vote. Um, I'm gonna do it in the order in which I see folks on the Zoom, uh, not alphabetically. That's okay. Uh, so, uh, Katie, uh, do you vote to approve the minutes?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Kristen Haggerty?
Aye.
Uh, Eric Van Loon?
Aye.
Keith Bergman?
Aye.
Parashar Patel? Uh, um, Leslie Coplo? Uh, Leslie, you're on mute. I'm sorry.
Sorry. Aye, and very nice job.
Uh, thank, and, uh, Eric Moore, aye. All right, so I miss anybody. Um, so those minutes, the June fourth minutes are approved. Thank you. Uh, moving on to the June, uh, uh, eighteenth minutes. These are, these were, um, uh, so, so I'll proceed without a motion to, to begin the discussion of the the June eighteenth minutes. Uh, these were prepared by Kristen Haggerty. Um, any discussion about the June eighteenth minutes? Uh, moving to approve those minutes then, uh, I'll basically poll everybody again, uh, in the order in which I see folks. Uh, Eric Van Loon?
Aye.
Katie Bresnik?
Aye.
Uh, uh, Kristen Haggerty?
Aye.
Uh, Leslie Coplo?
Aye.
Uh, Parashar Patel?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll take that as an aye, and Keith Bergman?
Aye.
And, um, I think that's all, oh, Eric Moore, aye. So, uh, these minutes are also approved unanimously, and thank you. Uh, yeah.
Can you hear me? Um, Phil Swain, so can you hear me?
Did he leave you out?
Yeah, you left me out of both votes. It's fine for the first one, because I, I would have, I could have stayed because I would have prepared them. But I approved the second ones, but I just wanted to make sure I'm on your screen.
Got it. Yeah, you're there. You know, I'm using the, uh, participants list, which is actually dynamic. I'm not really sure why. Uh, uh, and, uh, um, so I could do better with that, I guess. Um, okay, thank you, Phil. Thank you for speaking up. And so these minutes are also approved unanimously. So, thank you. Uh, moving into, uh, the next item on our agenda, uh, is, uh, Chair's remarks, I believe. Let's just bring this back. Uh, so, um, yeah, here we go. So I just wanted to, um, uh, make this smaller. There we go. So we've gone through public comment. Uh, just a three pager. I mean, the previous meeting that we had, uh, we talked a lot about, um, our really sort of, uh, not our elevator pitch, but our, our concise way of representing our mission. Uh, there were two substantial, uh, changes that came out of that discussion. Uh, one, uh, was the addition in effect that people have ready means to make well-informed decisions. Uh, and then, uh, uh, we were also were concerned about calling out representation explicitly. I interpreted that as town meeting functions credibly as a representative body of the town uh, in a very concise way. Uh, I also addressed, um, uh, yeah, and then, you know, a few sort of big picture goals. Uh, uh, why are we only seeing ten percent at Massachusetts town meetings in general? Uh, are civic processes adequately serving our civil needs, improving civic, civic engagement, understanding of participation overall? Which I believe David Allen is probably consonant with what you were, where you were talking about. Um, something that is new, I won't spend a lot of time in this. I'm just trying to summarize for us. Uh, is, uh, a, a rough timeline of what, um, our interactions with the public will look like, uh, and, you know, in this, this summer, basically, we're, we're doing a lot of research, uh, trying to understand what it is that we need to go learn additionally. Um, my sense is that throughout the fall, meeting in September through December, uh, we'll be engaging in different ways with the public. Uh, uh, part of that will be one or more surveys that we put out. Uh, part of that will be, um, uh, I hope some focus groups, uh, and I think as well that we can expect to have hearings around, uh, certain things. I, I think the electronic voting, uh, question, I think is a good candidate for a proper hearing. Um, so, and then I think by the time we get to the end of the year, uh, with the warrant opening up in January, I think that we want to be prepared to make our near-term improvements to the select board for things that will affect town meeting in twenty-twenty-five. Um, uh, and so, uh, there's that sort of piece of it, and then I think beyond what we're talking about having impact on, on town meeting, beyond twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five, I think we'll have a lot of other things to sort of talk about and recommend. Um, so this is a, a, a way of thinking about the phases of, of, of how we're interacting, sort of the phases of our project narrative, uh, as the public is, is reflecting on what we're doing. And I, I thought about this in, in part to help inform my conversation uh, with, uh, a member of the Concord Bridge, uh, that's gonna happen this, this week, this, this Friday. So I'll stop there. Uh, Keith, I see that your hand is raised. Uh, so please.
Uh, uh, thanks very much. Uh, I, I, uh, great preparation for this meeting, guys. I appreciate all the work that's, uh, gone into the packet uh, for us to, to look at beforehand. Uh, for the timetable, that's, uh, uh, the, the phases, I think that we'll want to adjust. Looking at the specific, uh, timetable for the, uh, twenty-twenty-five annual town meeting, which has the warrant closing on February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, we're, anything we do has got to be done well before that deadline, uh, if, if, uh, for a, uh, recommended near-term uh, improvements. So I, I'd suggest that we think about, um, even if it's to change, um, uh, the scope, um, I think March twenty-twenty-five is, is too late if the warrant is closed in February. Um, because near-term, because I'm just assuming near-term recommendations are things that we're looking at implementing at, at, uh, at town meeting in June, and there's a whole process, and there's the whole wheel, all the wheels are turning to get the, the, uh, materials ready for a town meeting. So, so I, I just say that we ought to, our deadline ought to be when the warrant is closed. Thanks.
Good. Thank you. Uh, noted. Um, any other comments? Uh, uh, Katie Bresnik, please?
Yes, maybe just a point of clarification. So it sounds like, I mean, I think it makes sense that we have our recommendations that would need to go on the warrant by the time the warrant is closed. Um, if I was reading this correctly, it sounds like there might be some other recommendations that are more procedural, not in the warrant, that could happen after the warrant is closed. Is that
Correct.
what I'm understanding, but obviously we want those far enough in advance for the planning, so it is possible to implement those at the meeting, depending on what they are.
That's right. Yeah. Um, right. So for example, there is, uh, the, the way that, uh, the moderator, um, might structure sort of the moderator's meeting, uh, as for the folks who are, are making citizen petitions, uh, and other folks who are presenting, gonna be presenting petitions, uh, or presenting articles. Uh, there, the way that she approaches that and the standards for publication, uh, for that might be things that we make a recommendation about. The way that the select board conducts its town meeting hearings, uh, which would begin after all this stuff in April, in early May, might be something that we want to have input to. And so while the warrant will close on the nineteenth, uh, there are things that happen between the closure of the warrant and, and, uh, you know, and the phases of our ramp-up to town meeting, where we may want to have uh, some things to offer. Uh, but I think to Keith's point, um, the clearer we can be, the sooner uh, as people begin to really sort of seriously look at their ramp-up for town meeting, the better.
Yeah, and, and if I could just make another point, our target audience for these interim recommendations is the select board. And they control everything else about the processes that all of the town departments and boards, uh, follow, and I think if, I think it would, um, make more of an impact if we ha, if by the time the warrant closes, we've at least got uh, what we think might be, uh, best practices for the conduct of the rest, all, the rest of the things that quickly follow on the time, town meeting schedule that they've already mapped out.
Yeah, yeah, to, to.
And that's just on the procedural stuff. Yeah.
Yeah. I think to your point as well, I think if we can be, um, uh, engaging with the select board even in early December about what to expect from us, uh, you know, the, the, the more time we all have to think about it together, the better in that sense. So again, uh, these phases represent a project narrative, as it were, for what we're doing. And, uh, uh, the dates are, are a little fuzzy. Uh, I, I think as we go forward. Um, uh, that's all that I have in terms of the, uh, Chair's remarks, just to bring us up to date based upon our conversation from last, last time. Uh, I'm gonna move forward then at this point into the next item on the agenda. Um, uh, so, uh, Kristen Haggerty, uh, um, you provided, uh, a write-up, um, uh, that was, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll summarize it in my way and then turn it over to you, uh, which was, uh, two parts. Uh, the first part, which I thought we would, uh, give some attention to tonight, uh, summarizes your takeaways from reading uh, a number of, of town meeting studies. Uh, and I thought that it would be valuable to bring that up tonight as a way of helping to inform uh, the next item on the agenda, how we're thinking about what we're gonna be looking for, um, from which towns. Uh, so may I turn it over to you just to make a few remarks, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, so please, uh, ask questions, everybody, as, as I go, if there's things. But I started, um, as we talked about the last time, I was like, man, everybody has done a town meeting study, or they've looked at their governance, you know? Let me see what we all have in common, so that we're not kind of duplicating work. Um, and also, this is kind of part of our due diligence. You know, Katie's looking at our, our internal data. Harshar's talking about kind of getting some data from peer towns, so that, you know, collectively, we can put things together, so we could say, this is, you know, part of our discovery and things like that. So as I was, as I was doing this, you know, basically I went through, you know, a number of the reports. Um, many of them kind of said the, uh, you know, same thing. So I've kind of, um, put that under each of these topics. And then I, as part of doing this, I'm also planning to talk to the former town moderator. So Carmen and I did meet once, Eric Van Loon, we're gonna catch up. You know, hopefully next week, and then Perry, he, I'll, I'll also talk to him, but the intent with that was saying, okay, well, you know, we had a study in nineteen ninety-six, then we had like a governance study in twenty-fourteen, and you know, changes have been made, what have been made, what changes have been made. So it was kind of try to collect all that information. And, uh, but as I went through this, um, you know, it occurred to me, and it occurred to Carmen while we were talking about it, is, you know, some, at some point, people were looking at things individually. So for example, um, a, a recommendation might be, example, um, a recommendation might be that, um, I'm looking at like in Concord, uh, the recommendation from Concord in nineteen ninety-six was the consent calendar should be continued and expanded where possible. And that was because they were trying to address a problem to balance the expeditious disposition of the town's legislative business with its full and unfurried consideration. And I give you that example because in some points, he, you know, what I was reading was here's a solution to this problem, and they kept kind of being, you, you know, as Carmen pointed out, she's like, well, it was kind of like deconstructivist, or, and, and, and what we might benefit is from a more holistic approach. And so, you know, we kind of went on to brainstorm, but the, the takeaways, and, and everybody can kind of read this, and I tried to tag, you know, which communities were saying different things, was yes, everybody in general is saying that the, the length of the meeting is, is long, and that's what I think Katie found in her data. That was kind of the number one thing, you know, even though we had a limited sample size, but, um, and, you know, we talked about accessibility in terms of inclusiveness and things like that. So there weren't really necessarily any surprise. In some cases, I, I put things in here that I thought were interesting, either, uh, a comment that they made in the report or, uh, a recommendation that they made, or maybe even something that they tried, like, so for example, um, uh, when you talk about moving the dates, right? Oh, we should have it on a weekday, we should have it on a weeknight. Um, you know, one of the things was, uh, the, in Westford, that committee concluded that there's no compelling impact on attendance related, related purely to the date and time of the meeting, right? So, so in other words, um, when we get to our kind of holistic uh, view, if that's how we choose to do it, um, we can kind of see what levers to, to, to move or not. But where I got from all this, and I'm happy to kind of go through it, but I don't, I feel like the more important aspect to share is, um, it sounds like attendance is driven by voter-interested issues, right? So, it, and none of this is necessarily a surprise, but in, in the way that we're thinking of it, it might make a difference in kind of how we proceed. Um, and Carmen and I talked about the, uh, meeting that we had during COVID, which was, um, you know, out on the, uh, out on the turf, and she said we were concluded in like two, three hours. And I remember that because I was on the planning board at the time, and we didn't present, we had presented ahead of time and so forth and so on, and she said, and we were able to debate and deliberate all of the ones that required deliberation. And so I was like, well, why can't we do that again? You know, why? And, and I always thought about like it being kind of more like a community event. When I go to town meeting, I'm like, hey, there's these people that I haven't seen, and it's, it, it feels like it feels good to be part of that community. And I was like, what if we did it, um, you know, like at Emerson Park, and people brought, you know, with their picnic blankets, and we brought potluck, and she's like, we could have food trucks. Anyway, we were kind of brainstorming, but not to get too far ahead. But what we kind of concluded was, um, and it was very, it was a departure of what I was originally thinking in terms of, what's, what's the problem, what are the constraints and things like that? And it was more along the lines of what Eric was saying, Eric Moore was saying about like our vision. What's our vision? And, and, you know, what would that look like? And so my vision after kind of reading all these things, uh, was, you know, this this shorter, really concise meeting where there's enough deliberation, um, and, and everybody, you know, comes, is able to come because of the shorter duration, is able to deliberate to a satisfactory level. And that only works if we have enough information ahead of time, to Keith's point about making sure that, um, you know, what they receive, what citizens receive is important, and to David Allen's point about this is not just a one-night event or multi-night event, this is a, you know, years-long process. So um, I, I give you all of that information just for the context of, um, yes, a lot of the town meeting, a lot of the towns have concluded the same issues. I feel that if we continue to look at the issues separately, we're gonna arrive at the same place where we always have been. And by the way, all of these towns, I shouldn't say all, I believe most of these towns in doing this have also looked at the, the form of governance. And in almost every case, they're like, yep, we want to keep town meeting. And I think it was the town of Lee that maybe, and I didn't reference them here, but I think they're the ones that switched back and forth between, um, representative and, and open town meeting. So I think that if we kind of said, you operate under the premise that, you know, we want to make open town meeting as, as good as it can be, and this is what it would look like if it was really good. Uh, and then we started kind of, kind of to build to that, and then get people's, you know, feedback on that. Um, that is kind of my new thought, rather than originally, I was like, you know, let's, let's attack each solution, or let's attack each problem and its constraints separately. I think that based on everything that I've read, and these problems have been the same since nineteen ninety-six with the Concord study. All of these towns are doing the same thing. And so I think the bigger question is why are towns continuing to study town meeting? Like, what's really prompting that dissatisfaction? And Carmen mentioned this a little bit. So Eric Van Loon, please.
Uh, sorry, actually, hang on a second. So, um, so thank you, Kristen. Um, Eric will get you in a second. Um, so there are two things here, right? And one is, I think you've done a really nice job of framing, uh, the, what I'll call the experience question, right? What do we want? What's the vision of what town meeting can be? There may be other visions, right, that we have. Uh, and then I think that on the experiences side, it, it's gonna be, does that vision, do we do everything that town meeting needs to be, and as embodied in that vision? And, you know, the other piece of that is how do we make it work, right? What is the tech? The policy, et cetera, that would make that work. And so I think in, in this focus, and I, I think the reason why I, I wanted you to present uh, this material, to share this material tonight, uh, was because you did do a survey of other towns. Uh, you identified some patterns in what the other towns are doing, and that can inform what we ask the other towns next. Uh, I think the, uh, approach of thinking holistically, hundred percent with that. I think the specific ideas are very interesting. Um, but I, I wanna focus our discussion tonight on what we know about what other folks are doing. And I think the really clear question you've raised is, if we do more of that, except a little bit better, did we still only land at, you know, ten, five to ten percent participation? And maybe that's okay, and maybe it's not, right? I think, you know, in a way, what you're doing is trying to say, I agree with you, is to make a space for really thinking radical in a fundamental sense, ra, a radical change to town meeting. And our, our, our customer, our, our community might buy that and might not buy that. Um, so I think as we look at a, a set of alternatives for town meeting, the, the big change one, I think is really interesting and could be very important, but we also have to look at incremental improvement. And I think that the referencing what other towns are doing, uh, hews to the idea of also potential incremental improvement and helping, helping to expose fundamentals. So sorry for all the talking. Um, Erica, recognize you, please.
Uh, thank you. Um, first and, and, uh, maybe most important, special thanks to Kristen for all of this, uh, homework, pulling things together, the analysis, and, uh, really jump-starting our thinking about uh, agendas based on what we, what we've learned from other towns. Um, and second, uh, maybe it's thanks to David Allen, the, uh, that what we have referenced as holistic, maybe is also thinking about what will make, uh, what'll make us feel better about the state of democracy in Concord Town Meeting, if you, if you will. I mean, the state of the overall process and democracy. Um, the third, though, I did have one really strong negative, uh, reaction about, I, and maybe it was Weston or Westford, um, the way they formulated things, that there's no compelling evidence, which, you know, proves that doing X would, uh, produce a, a, a better result. And I, I do think that that's, um, uh, not, I'll just put it kindly, it's not the criteria that we should use. Um, we're gonna do our best to have surveys and focus groups and things of that nature. But we're gonna have to synthesize that, and it's not as if there's, uh, I believe that we will have somehow, uh, in all the things that we might want to talk about, uh, compelling evidence that doing something will, will produce a, a good result. And this ties in a little bit, Eric, to your last point. There may be some things that, uh, we do that make us feel that it's a better town meeting, and it more embodies democracy, and more people will feel good about it, but it's still maybe the same ten or twelve But it's still maybe the same 10 to 12%, except on, you know, school budget or some hot button issue like the bottle bill or, or, uh, or sounds from, uh, leaf blowers or, you know, whatever turns out people in, in a particular year. And I think that we need to keep in mind that, uh, in, in part, uh, we may well be weighing in and recommending things that is our hunch. It's the product of our, our deliberations. But not, uh, strictly speaking, uh, clearly evidence-based.
Good. Thank you, Eric. Uh, Katie, I see you, please.
Um, yes. First, I guess I also wanted to echo the point of thanking Kristen for digging into all these reports and, and meeting with folks. I know that was a big job. Um, I really appreciate the idea of a radical change and I hadn't really been thinking like that. Um, I almost see this as two potential, like two things that we should be proposing potentially. One, a radical change. We have, you know, the outdoor picnic or whatever our vision is of that change. And also having these incremental improvements. And, um, that could be part of our survey data collection to see what the community actually prefers in terms of the approach. And then that is a little bit more data to suggest the correct approach, but also do you want to echo Eric's point? I think this will ultimately be hunches that we have. Um, and, you know, we can only do the best we can. And I guess any way that we can avoid duplicating efforts of these other towns, looking at their data like Kristen did. But I just don't know that there is a lot of data to suggest that any particular solution is going to work without trying it.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, Katie, if I could just follow up on that, Katie, I think that's a great point. And I think one of the things that we can do when we propose our solutions or recommendations is say, and this is how long we would recommend trying it for two years. And then this is how we might recommend evaluating it. Um, so that people know, okay, well, if it doesn't work, we don't have to stick with it or something like that. And that might, you know, help people to evaluate, you know, our choices and things like that.
Good. Thank you. Uh, Katie, I brought this slide up. So you also did a nice piece of work. Uh, and, and in this case, the, your, 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 um, more detailed analysis of the, your deeper analysis of the, the results in the town meeting survey. I wanted to include this in the packet for this week, for this meeting. So that again, uh, because you identified very concisely, uh, some patterns, some issues that represent sort of, some issues that are consonant with what we're seeing and, and what Kristen surfaced. And I think what as well, Parrish are will, will be, will be identifying as well. So I just wanted to give a chance for, while you're here. So, uh, just a chance to talk a little bit about your key findings.
Sure.
That's okay.
Yep, of course. Sure.
Could I just, could I ask a question? Are we done with Kristen's piece? Cause I did have some comments and questions on it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Leslie. Um, um, I, I guess I see them as all part of one, one agenda item, but, uh, let me take your question, please, or your comment, please, uh, before Katie goes in.
Okay, great. I appreciate it. Um, I also agree with everybody else who mentioned this was a really phenomenal job of pulling all this information together. I just had a couple of questions. There was a point, there's no solution to stacking. Can you remind me what stacking is?
Yes, I think I left that out.
Okay.
Other towns had, uh, said that comments from the public about, you know, people just showing up for one item was, was, was an issue that caused them to look into town meeting. And so they, that was referred to as stacking when, you know, everybody comes for one item.
Oh, okay. Great. And then, um, there were, you know, some really interesting points here, like move all non-voting items outside of meeting business. Are these have been brought up now in this, um, presentation? Are we all going to share our thoughts on that? Or are we going to say, you know, great point, let's look at these in detail later? What are people's sense on that?
Yeah, my sense is no, we don't need to go to any, you know, solutions yet. I just, I think that's Eric, what you were, you were thinking too. So it was more like, I wanted to kind of put this stuff in one place so we could figure out what the next steps would be without necessarily recreating. But that's, that's my thought.
Okay, perfect. And then under, um, accessibility, Westford offers family-friendly seating at their Saturday town meeting where parents can sit with their children if they choose. Did that actually have an impact? Did you see any evidence of that?
So I didn't see, um, a percentage of people who attended, and I'm trying to think if I even saw like evaluation. Much of this is missing kind of the after the fact, except for there's one piece of information I'll show you. But I will tell you, and it'll, it'll relate to kind of, you know, um, some data that Parrish are once is thinking about collecting. Acton looked at like five years of data and they had an average of 2.4% of the voting people attend. Um, the, in the Acton, Boxborough, Hudson, Littleton, Maynard and Stowe study together, they saw between about two and six percent over 20 years. So I don't, I did not see any before and after data in terms of attendance or, um, satisfaction necessarily, um, that, that I, that I know of.
Okay, great. Um.
But I will tell you, can I, what related to that? Um, I would, I would say, um, uh, Acton, who did the, you know, multi-town one, did, um, conclude that improvements such as childcare and transportation implemented by a few of our towns did not significantly move the attendance numbers.
I saw that.
Yeah. So that, that's kind of the only, you know, point about that. So.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I actually distinguish between being able to bring my kid versus putting my kid in with unknown babysitters. Like we were always reluctant to do that because I just knew my kids wouldn't react well. So I think that might be part of why people don't take advantage of it. I also thought your point about the clickers, which has probably been made before, but a lot of people talk about its efficiency. I, in my experience, didn't find it necessarily more efficient because you have to hand them out. You have to train everybody every night on how to use them. And you have to have technical support, which all takes up time. But the privacy factor I think is very important and people, I think, are maybe attracted to them for that reason and a perceived idea about, um, efficiency. And probably we would get more efficient over time if we used it every time.
We are, we are for sure going to come back to clickers, but not, not tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I love the point about it's a, it's a privacy thing. And then, um, the 2014 Concord recommendation on interactive electronic document and explaining Concord's town government, did that take place? Do we know?
I, I'm going to see if Eric Van Loon has any comment on that. Um, I, uh, I, I mean, I just think that our website had our, our town website has so much information now. And, you know, with the videos. So I guess I was kind of assuming that all of the information we have now is above and beyond what was envisioned in 2014. Uh, I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on that.
Uh, we can come back to that, I think. Um, thank you, Leslie.
That was all my questions. Thank you.
Cool. Good. Thank you. And thank you, uh, Kristen as well. Uh, Katie, uh, back to you, uh, uh, please.
Sure. Um, so what I did is I took the post-meeting survey data from this past 2024 town meeting of which 108 individuals submitted feedback. So that's less than 10% of those attending. So we should interpret these results with caution, knowing that this is just a selected set of folks who wanted to comment, which may uh, be driven by some complaints as, you know, as general in this type of research. Um, and maybe I'll just go over the key findings slide. And there are some, um, charts on the subsequent slides to show the actual data points if you're interested. So let's see. So the most feedback came from folks who try to attend every year. Um, so we have, um, actually, if you don't, don't mind staying on the key findings and then we can go to the, the pie charts if, if folks are particularly interested. And half of the people who responded attended all three nights. So the majority of folks are those regular attendees. And these are the comments that are driven a lot by those people. Um, and then we had, I think similar to what Kristen's point is, we had folks who, who were coming, who were also interested in voting on very specific items. And those people were less likely to come for all three nights. Um, in general across, so I, I focused on doing stratified analyses by these specific groups. So those who are regular attendees versus those that are issue-driven attendees or had time this year to attend. So less regular folks, probably people we'd want to engage more and try to get, become more involved. Um, so the most common barrier to attendance for pretty much everyone across the board, across these two strata was just the length of the meeting. And for folks who just came for a single item or, um, had the time this year to attend, the, the key challenges they found to attending were, um, difficulty in attending in person and different problems with, um, scheduling. So they had a busy schedule. It didn't quite fit into their schedule or they had, or it was taking away from family time. Um, I also looked at sources of information, thinking that this could be a place we target either educational materials or some, you know, advertisements for the, the town meeting. And I think as expected, the warrant was one of the useful or essential pieces of information across these two groups. People also found the bridge articles to be, um, very valuable. Um, so I think we should really take advantage of the bridge and that I think being a new resource we have may be a way to engage people more in the future. And, um, friends and neighbors' word of mouth was also important. And I think one of the things we may need to consider in terms of seeing change is that it may take a couple of years if we, let's say, do a radical change to really have word of mouth for people to know that these changes are happening to know that this is an event that people want to attend to really see some improvement in our, um, attendance numbers. Um, and I was just thinking about, um, in general, people didn't, uh, the people who didn't come to the meeting as frequently actually use the town website more, maybe were less tuned into what's going on in the, the day to day. Um, and in general, social media wasn't used um, for information about the town, which I found interesting. Um, so I think really targeting warrant and, and using the Concord Bridge as an information source when possible, uh, would be valuable. So I think main takeaways are the meetings too long, according to the folks that, um, responded. Uh, from my own bias, I think that this would be a conclusion that many people beyond those who just, um, responded to this post-meeting questionnaire would also feel. Um, people are interested in remote participation. That was in a number of comments. And we should think about communicating and educating through the bridge when possible.
Thank you. Uh, again, I really, this was really nicely done. I appreciate your effort on it. And I think your conclusions are very interesting. Eric, I see your hand up, uh, please.
Uh, yes. And I just wanted to underscore, uh, one of the first points there. The most common barrier to attendance is length of the meeting. And I would sort of say it again, length of the meeting is the most common barrier. And say again, that if you look up there, this is, this is from the people who always come and the people who have come for three nights. So they, by definition, have a much higher tolerance for length of the meeting than your average, uh, your average participant. And I believe that this arises from a sense of frustration that many attendees feel that they are sitting there wasting their time. Um, that there's a lot of unnecessary stuff. There, uh, is a failure to, uh, to focus. That there are some people who, um, have a strong desire to be heard on not every issue, but multiple times during, during the evening. And I was struck in one of our earlier, uh, meetings where Carmen said, uh, something to the effect that she didn't want anybody leaving town meeting feeling that they did not have a chance to be heard. And I think that, um, I disagree with that perspective. I think that there, and I believe this is something we're going to have to wrestle with as we think about, uh, choices. There will be individuals who will wish that, um, they had a chance to say even more. But I think that the moderator's responsibility, and I would urge us to think about adopting this, uh, is more to the meeting as a whole, to everybody who's there, to even if somebody, uh, some, some people don't get a chance to speak. I mean, the whole idea behind calling the question is that at some point, even if there's 50 people still at the mics, if, if the majority of the meeting uh, wants to have, have heard enough and are ready to vote, that you, you cut that off. And I think, uh, some fine-tuned thinking about, what's enough discussion and or, uh, test votes, um, and not necessarily on the merits. That at a certain period in time, for example, one could, the moderator could, could ask, um, how, how many people have made up their mind how they're going to?
Sure. So Eric.
Of that, of that nature that, uh, can help try to overcome the sense of frustration that a lot of people feel and it gets translated into length of the meeting. I think that's working for a lot.
So, so yes, length of the meeting, uh, is a problem. Uh, it's a problem that's been identified. Uh, I think in other, the other town meeting surveys, Kristen called it out. You know, again, here Katie called it out. I think, uh, Parrish, are we going to shift over to you very shortly? Um, so that's, that's an issue. I think the solutions for length of meeting, how the moderator conducts the meeting, how we compose the warrant, uh, uh, what norms we have for, for asking questions to the degree to which the public can be well informed before the meeting, all those things. I don't know. There's a lot there, right? So, so I think I wanted to emphasize, uh, Katie's findings here as complimentary to or consistent with uh, Kristen's observations, reduced meeting length, um, real interest in remote participation. And, uh, I think Parrish, I think to hold, uh, is, uh, when we're talking to different communities or different moderators is how effective is their local media, uh, in, in supporting, uh, the work of town meeting and the, and the work of town government? Uh, we're, we're, we're really fortunate right now to have the bridge. Two, three years ago, we didn't. Uh, and so I think that that, uh, as we're looking at our communication, it's really material to, to what, how people, as Katie showed here, uh, it's really material to how people are, are understanding what's going on. So, uh, I had identified a chance for public comment here. Uh, we do have some folks from the public on. Uh, and again, the topic here is, uh, reflecting on patterns of, of, of intervention across different towns and patterns of, of issues across different towns. Uh, both, and both of these are, uh, salient to, to how I believe Parrish are, uh, and us is going to be addressing, uh, follow-up conversations with different towns. So on that theme, do, do, is there anybody from the public is going to comment? Uh, it would be two minutes max. Uh, David Allen, I see your hand up, please.
Thanks, Eric. Um, I myself want to express my appreciation for Kristen's, uh, deep dive there. That was quite something. Also adding Eric in, uh, the both of them did, uh, raise, uh, the effectiveness of the democracy as, uh, the criterion in the end. Let me apply that to two items that have come up here. Uh, one is the size of attendance. Democracy works well if, uh, the body deliberating is representative. If you want to take a mind experiment, imagine that all about 12,000 registered voters came to town meeting. Would that be necessary? No, actually. It's not. Uh, numbers of people who come, I want to suggest strongly, it's whether or not they're representative. On this question of everyone speaking, uh, what is the legislature? It's essence is deliberation. I think Eric has laid out some of the choices to be made. I suggest judging this should be how effective is the deliberation, particularly when you may have a thousand or 2,000 people there. Thanks.
Good. Thank you. Um, any other comments from the public? I see none. Um, so I'm going to conclude here and again, say thank you to Katie uh, and to Kristen for, for. So I'm gonna conclude here and again, say thank you to Katie uh, and to Kristen for, for their contributions here. Uh, and Parrish, I'm gonna move forward to you. So uh, this is um, again, a discussion topic. Uh, Parrish, I'm gonna turn it over to you, but just before doing that, uh, I just wanna ask, what outcomes are you seeking? Uh, for your work from this discussion? What do we wanna get? What do we wanna get for you?
Well, I, I guess the question is, do we wanna do this at all? Originally, you remember a couple of weeks ago, we talked about doing a survey? Of the towns, I think the work that Katie and Kristen have done may have gotten us ninety percent of the way there, so. Like the first, the next question is, well, given that, do we feel like we need more information? And if we do, then we can leverage potentially some information that's already out there. As I said in my last slide, there are some surveys that were done by Massachusetts Moderator, Moderators Association in twenty twenty-two. That asked some of these questions. We've got those answers relatively new. So if we need additional information or insight from towns. Thought is we can leverage some of that information, see what the missing gaps are, and then. Have targeted reach outs to get the specific information that we want from the identified towns versus casting a big, huge. Net, right? Because we talked about doing a survey. So it was in that context. Then I wrote these thoughts down, and of course Kristen did the summary from some of the studies and other places that's already there, which has a lot of useful information. I think that's the main thing for us to think about as a committee. If we do wanna go forward, I could just quickly go over the approach that I thought could make sense.
I think, I think it's worth talking about the approach. I, I think having, having looked at the, the spreadsheet from the MMA and having, you know, reviewed the Massachusetts Moderators Association. And having uh, you know, lo- looked at Kristen and Katie's stuff. I think, you know, one point is that we don't wanna, we don't, we'd like to avoid duplicating work and, and to, to that as well. Uh, it's really that we would like to leverage the know-how of other communities who've thought hard about this. And there are some great studies out there, uh, or, you know, things that seem pretty, pretty useful. Both in terms of the interpretation analysis and also in terms of some of the data work that they've done. Um, the other thing is that I think we have an opportunity, because some of these studies have happened, you know, years back, a few years back. We do have an opportunity to learn from outcomes, from interventions that they may have made. Uh, and see if things are, are there improvements, or was it just a good idea that didn't really pan out? And I think as well that there are areas that we might wanna ask about that uh, aren't necessarily there in, in the town meeting studies as well. Uh, so I, I think it's worth talking about the prospect of, of some effort to reach out to towns. On a, on a town by town basis to, to learn more about where they're at. Also, you know, looking at what you have here, Parrish, in terms of uh, like, you know, proposed approaches identifying like towns or benchmark towns. Is it okay to start with that?
Absolutely. We just go through, so.
Okay, okay. Katie, Katie, let me, do, do you still wanna make a point before?
Um, I, I guess um, it, maybe it's not the right time, but I was just thinking like, one thing that Kristen, uh, I think all of our points. Came to is like, what actually worked? And there's no like, post recommendation outcome assessment. Um, and so I think that's where something like this could really come in handy, is like, getting the moderators to say like, what was changed? And what was the impact of that? Do you think it was a good idea after it was already done? Anyway, I'll let you continue.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
And maybe that is the one key question that we want. So rather than the approach here, which again, was. Sort of in a vacuum now, sort of having insight to what they'd already done the summary of. You, you've done some of that survey, Kristen did the summary of the studies. We could take a similar approach, modify this, identify the towns in which we're interested. Maybe it's the towns that have already done the study and we just do that. And don't focus on like towns, as I've said here, but in any case, pick the towns. There are some towns here, I originally thought about, well, let's pick the towns that the schools use as, be similar to Concord. And then we could add some others, and I think Eric took a shot at that. So we're not boiling the ocean, basically. Here's the next slide. So then, once we've identified the spots, towns, you know, in a survey, you wanna minimize the number of questions. So identify the key questions that we want to have answered. I threw some up here. The last one is something probably maybe six and seven is something we can go back to. Some of the identified towns and just sort of narrow down the, the questions we're asking, because in particular. Most of the data here is actually available on the next slide. So the available data is the survey that I talked about. We see the League of Women Voters in Acton did, did a study, there's some other studies. And then the Massachusetts Municipal Association also has some good data. So you could sort of leverage that data, pull out the answers to those questions and others. Have a little bit of a profile for each of the communities we're talking about. Develop a picture and then say, hey, wait a minute, there's a couple of questions that were interested, they're not there, and then just. Reach out to those communities to fill in the gap, if you will. That was the approach I was thinking uh, originally. So I said, Eric, I didn't go to the last slide, which is an empty next steps.
Nice. Um, let me go back to uh, um, the like, the like towns then. So the Massachusetts Community Comparison Report, I believe, looks at both population. Uh, uh, and uh, uh, and uh, income. Uh, and I, frankly, I looked at this a while ago, so I forgot, but uh, three towns that came up. Uh, Sharon has, of course, a, a pretty well-developed town meeting study. Uh, and they're, you know, quote unquote, demographically a town like us. Uh, Sudbury, you know, I, I, I um. They're, they're next door, uh, but, but I, I have not seen a lot from them uh, on, on their website about town meeting. Uh, and then Hopkinton, uh, I don't recall if they have a recent town meeting study or not. So recent, you know, obviously Andover, uh, I believe North Andover as well might be a good town to look at. Uh, and Westford, uh, you know, has a recent study. Um, the uh, uh, league, the league looked, uh, the Acton, I forget the, the title of the, the, the. The Acton Area League of Women Voters. That, that's the one that looked at Littleton and, and Boxborough and Maynard and Acton and a couple of other towns. So I think that that, that's a really great point of reference for us. Um, Wayland uh, stands out as a town with uh, sort of tech leadership in both electronic voting. And in their, their effort to get state movement on representative town meeting. Uh, I'd suggest that we would pay some attention to Wayland as well. So, so just looking at the slide, you know, we've got seven or so towns that makes sense. Uh, Kristen Haggerty, uh, uh, please?
I can wait for you to finish your thought, Eric.
Okay, yeah. So, so are there others? Are, are there others that we wanna emphasize? I think uh, uh, it seems as though it's not, not a hard decision to pick a few out, out of these. Uh, and then I would suggest that rather than treating this as sort of a very rigidly defined sample. I think perhaps as, as things come up that are interesting, uh, we feel, we feel comfortable, comfortable in reaching out to those towns. I think, you know, that the seven or so that we're talking about could, could, as you said, Parrish, be a basis uh, for comparison. I would emphasize open town meeting uh, as, as sort of the, 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 the control, as it were, but. Um, uh, I'll go back to you, um, uh, Kristen.
Um, thanks, uh, Parrish, for thinking this through. My, my question, you know, to all of us is um. You know, and I think you mentioned this, you know, what's, what's our purpose here in collecting this information? I, I think that it's part of due diligence, right? So that if somebody asks, well, what are they doing in another town? You know, we can quickly get that information. But I'm also um, wondering if this is gonna somehow uh. Hamstring us, if that's not the right word, but, you know, tie us down in, in a way that we don't need to, and like, and, and here's what I'm thinking, it's like. Well, if we compare ourselves to all our other towns and they compare us, them to us, then we're all stuck in this cycle. So I, I didn't know if there was like, another purpose that we might have in mind for collecting this data. One, it, it might be good data for everybody to have, just so that if they, people keep doing town meeting studies, they know that, you know. That there's already this baseline or something, but in terms of kind of our deliberation or recommendations. What might we use this data for? Or um, conversely, what might having this data? You know, do that wouldn't be good?
So I guess in my mind, Kristen, at the end of the day, if people do ask us, well, what other towns do? We've got a profile of seven or eight other towns you did, and frankly, as I said earlier, I don't think it's any different than the summary you did by calling. So I think it's just another attempt, and frankly, as I said, if we feel that we have sufficient information by the work that you've done. Then we don't need to do this, right? But I do, I don't think just knowing what others, others have done necessarily constrains us. From new thinking or anything else. I mean, it's out there, we can look at it, dissect it, tear it apart. Decide to use some of what they've done or not use it.
Okay.
Just because they've done it doesn't mean we've got to follow it.
Okay, that, that's the part that I, that would be helpful, because I agree. People, if people are gonna ask for it, we wanna definitely have it at the ready.
Yeah, uh, we have a lot to learn as well. I think uh, uh, I'm, I'm happy to see us reaching out and learning more. Katie, I see you, please?
And maybe just a quick point. I kind of see this, like, if we ask what everyone's doing and everyone's doing this one thing. And we're not doing that thing, but we as a group or community think it's a good idea to do that thing. It's, we can say we're gonna do that without too much more look into it, knowing that, you know, this is proven across towns. So it's kind of a low hanging fruit type item. Um, I guess that's my thought.
Good, thank you. Uh, you know, I see this in a way, do, uh, due diligence is really important. I think it's also to, in a way to have sort of an informative prior as we try things, as we make bets, as it were, uh, and experiment. So uh, I'm, I'm personally all for it, as long as we have the resource to, to do it. Uh, I'd like to, to move forward to uh, things that we'd be asking about. I think um. I suggest that we focus in open town meeting.
Can I just interrupt for one thing?
I'm sorry, Parrish, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. So I, I think this may in fact be less about asking, given the scope of that twenty twenty-two survey. And more about what do we pull out of that survey?
Yeah.
Because it's pretty easy to pull. It's in an Excel file.
Yeah.
Right? And then trying to carefully decide, is there anything else we wanna ask about? And I think there are items one through five or four actually are in that survey.
Yeah.
That's easily available. So then it might be just a matter of asking, do we want to know about five, six and seven or anything else?
So I, I took a look at the, the Excel file that you sent and um, um, I think. We need to be careful about posting it simply because there are addresses, e- email addresses in it.
Yeah.
But I, I, I think it also needs to be clear that we have the right to post it, uh, simply because it's coming from the MMA. Uh, but I think it would be valuable to share that uh, with the, the group and with the public in effect.
Yeah.
The, the, I'm not really an Excel guy. I mean, I am, but I'm not. So I, I think it was a, a headache to really kind of format that spreadsheet to make, to make it readable. But um, there are a few things that stood out for me. What is that? That so many of the meetings are run from two to five hours, that, that range, right? Two is sort of the lower bound of a long meeting, for, like, for us. Five is pretty long, right? It's a workday, basically. Uh, so I think a little more precision around, uh, really how long your meetings running would be helpful. Uh, a second thing, and this goes back to, you know, when, when have you made, when have you made interventions and how's it working out? I think uh, as you have here, item six, a big question for us is how, what effect, what impact is electronic voting having on, on um. Both meeting operation and deliberation, the character of deliberation. Uh, so I think that's something that just knowing that they have electronic voting can help us identify who to talk to further, but I think that's a big one. Something that's not on the spreadsheet that I think is relevant, but I'm not exactly sure how, is how expensive is it? So, so ma- so many of these, these towns are, are basing their meetings in schools. And so there is a, a normal negotiation in terms of, you know, highly, highly, high, highly utilized facilities. And town meeting is a big, can have a big footprint on, on that. So there's some normal negotiation around when we can have meeting in the school system. But there's also this huge question for me of what does it cost to have a night of town meeting? And for the towns that have uh, town meeting, you know, one in the spring and one in the fall, what does that cost basis look like? What does it look like to have, uh, you know, we, we don't, we don't. Could we have five nights of a two-hour town meeting? Could we afford that? I don't know. Uh, but I think when we think about doing more with the pattern of town meeting that we have. Um, that kind of solution is a thing that, that comes to mind. And so understanding how expensive it is for other towns to conduct their town meeting, I think would be helpful for us. Uh, I see Eric, we'll come back to you in a second. And then finally, the thing that came up in terms of the, the availability. Of local media and the, the role that local media is playing for those meetings as well. Um, do they have a good local paper still? Um, those are things that, that I would like to know more about as we look at uh, uh, what's really making a town meeting work well or not. Uh, I don't know, uh, Eric, it'll go to you, but I guess I'll ask again in this group, are there other things that we would like to ask? Uh, of other towns that are not so obvious necessarily in the studies that we've seen. Uh, Eric, please?
Um, we used to have to look at, at the expense, um, back when I was moderator. A, a major percentage of the expense each time is the initial setup. So what, what, once you're there, the, the difference between three nights, two nights and three nights is, is relatively small. On the other hand, the o- the overall amount as a percentage or in the perspective of the town budget. Um, is so tiny that if we really feel there's a compelling uh, reason. To have more meetings or shorter or different venue or whatever. And it doubles the cost of, of what town meeting is in the, in the present format. I think we wanna be aware of that, of course. Um, but I don't think that that should be a, a, a block to our making recommendations that we think really ought to be done.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, Shannon McAndrew, I see your hands, please?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say that something that I could easily do for you guys is download like, um, what the. Outlined budget for town meeting looks like. So those will include line items that have roughly the amount that things cost per year. Definitely the biggest expense for us is the audio visual um, contract. Um, and something else that came up this year, um, you know, when Carmen was maybe considering, and I'm sure this is something you all will talk about too, is having like a satellite location. And you know, we, we talked about Harvey Wheeler for a little bit. And, you know, we thought, why not? We were gonna be able to connect the broadband, whatever, it was gonna be good, but um. It was this, the staff overtime costs that were going to run us way over. So that was something that I didn't think about previously, that I thought I would just um, mention to you guys. But I can definitely um, in the next meeting packet, I can show you what the breakdown for um, our town meeting budget looks like.
Great, thank you. That would be really, that would be really helpful.
This is Leslie uh, speaking. Sorry, I don't have a little hand icon on my phone, but um. Uh, I was also very closely involved in town meeting Concord with um, Eric and um, and the AV folks. And the other thing is scheduling, like, how, how many nights do they have available? They were often working like back to back to back throughout the spring on all the other towns. So I'm not sure if they would have, you know, five nights to give, for an example. Um, and that process of getting the contract signed and nailing down the dates can start pretty early. And then the overtime certainly is a factor with the facilities folks and stuff that have to set up chairs before hours and. Also making sure that the school is available, et cetera, et cetera. Um, getting back to your other point about what are other things we'd like to know from other towns, um. One thing I'd love to know, I don't know if we're gonna be able to uh, surface this information, but like, what did you try and it failed? Um, not just what were your successes, because I think we can learn from the failures. I mean, sometimes it might fail because of particular circumstances or, you know, the composition of the town or the select board or whatever. Um, but in other cases, we could uh, potentially avoid mistakes. Thanks.
Yeah. Parrish, let me ask, I mean, do you feel uh? Do you feel confident in picking some towns here?
Yeah. So let me, let me take, let me do this, Eric. Because I'm fairly, fairly new move with Excel. Let me take the towns on here, and it won't be hard. See, I can map all these towns from the survey. And then we can prioritize the towns that we want to actually do the survey for some of the missing gaps and Acton, Boxer, Littleton, Sudbury, Sharon, Upkington, and then Andover, Sharon, Westford, Belmont, Lexington, drops, maybe we want to add one or two on the other side. Let me pull together that, what that looks like. It was a spreadsheet, and maybe that's a spreadsheet we can share with folks, and we can strip out the original one and show information, but to make it a manageable look for the committee and others. I can put that together and then we could say, okay, I've got three additional questions, right? How long is the meeting, the expenses, expenses per night? And the role of the local media? We can then form a very quick survey to send out to those targeted committees and I think Carmen said she'd be willing to use the MMA to reach out to the moderators in each town.
That's a great summary. Thank you. I think, you know, given that we were gonna get real expense information from Concord, I'm not sure that maybe asking other towns about what they spend in town meeting is all that useful anymore. I don't know, right? I think that the point around what have you tried lately? That's worked out really well, or hasn't? I think would be a real, a real question to, to.
So that, that information is in the survey, by the way. They do, they've tried. And then I think the question, so this is why I've been coming out of that. If we ask the last question of, hey, how we can modify last question is other things you've tried and there's, you know, have you seen an increase in attendance?
Yeah. Sure, sure. Okay. Well, I'm satisfied that you have a course of action, Parashar. Do you, do you need anything more from us in this or?
No, the only thing I'll need is once I pull together the profile, I will wordsmith those additional questions. People can provide input one on one. Is that correct? Or we go through Shannon, right?
Yes.
Or, or I can provide it and you guys can discuss it at the next meeting on the ninth. If I'm not there. And then once we discuss it, I'll go ahead and do the legwork with Carmen.
Okay, okay. Good. All right. Thank you. Thank you. That's great. So to move on, I didn't give any public opportunity for public comment here, but I think I'm going to forego that for so so what's next? So, okay, so, so previous meeting, we talked about where we can disidentifying what each of us might be working on. The focus was on the logistics, the, you know, the, the logistics communication and night of town mean operations side, so to speak. So just want to open it up. I mean, I think Kristen or Leslie, Philip, Eric, any, anything that you want to offer here in terms of where you're thinking to focus your attention over the next couple of weeks?
This is Leslie.
Thank you.
So one of the things I've been thinking about a lot that I think we're probably going to work on doing is to get more information into the warrant on the model that Keith's, sorry, Keith, I can't remember where you worked last, was it Littleton?
Yeah, Littleton, yeah, yeah.
Had, had made some major changes and I thought it might be good for me to take a look and maybe talk to Keith more about that, read through his presentation that we didn't get a chance to review last time. And start thinking about what those changes are and how it might impact the timing of how people prepare for the warrant. So that's, that's my general idea. Take a deeper look at that.
Excellent. Good. Okay. And I, I don't, I don't think you're, there, there's no, no obstacles to that from at least from where I sit. So that's good. Keith, yeah.
Yeah, if I could, yeah, I'd cer- I'd certainly appreciate and welcome that, that opportunity as well. On the larger issue of let's see, like, I'm not having a senior moment, but I'm just, I'm just recalling the discussion earlier on in the meeting where there was the thought that before we went ahead with solutions, we, we better make sure we understand the why. And at least on the portion that has to do with providing the public with more information, I, I'm already there with why that that's, that's a good thing. And would, would like to spend some more time looking at specifically, well, what does that, what does that look like? And the, and the reason that I had mentioned the timetable around the closure of town meeting. When the administration asks the departments and boards to prepare for town meeting, if you know what the end product looks like, then you will better prepare all along the way for the things that you need. If you know later, you're going to have to explain what you're doing to, or, or or have to address some issues that are going to come up at town meeting. I think it's important to get that out out now. And the way I approached that as a town manager and a town administrator for thirty, thirty seven years was I always saw myself at the town meeting and what was, what did I? And as I was preparing for it, what did I want to make sure that I had available at town meeting and that the voters saw beforehand? And that sort of process, which may even involve, I think, talking with staff and just seeing logistically, what does, what does that involve? I think that would, that would be useful. A useful use of time. So thanks.
Yeah, thank you. That would be excellent. I, I think if I generalize a little bit, what you're referring to is how is the communication work, what the workflow that produces the things that we communicate from the town to the public and from, from people who are presenting articles from the public? What does it look like in the published side, so to speak? I mean, the warrant is a thing, you know, that we're consuming from the public, but what is it, what is it like to, to do an effective job of producing the warrant? And an effective job of producing the collateral, collateral communication? That's sort of the area that we're, that you're talking about. Is it fair?
Yes, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Thank you. Going around Phil, do you, do you have anything you want to nominate right now or are you still thinking?
Well, my thought is after reading everything that Parishar has already put together, the one thought I had is we could add to the survey or the, the questions. What sort of communications are made to the public about issues in the town?
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
So and ask, first of all, do you have a functioning town? Local newspaper, which we happily have now, we didn't have for a few years. But also what other sort of communications are made to the town? And I'll give you an example. For example, I know that Truro, the town of Truro, which is much smaller than Concord, but they produce a monthly newsletter from, from all the different town departments about everything they're doing, including a town manager's report. But it, it's, does a very good job of communicating the issues. And, you know, as a matter of fact, I know people complained in Truro that it's too much information. But the point is, it, it certainly informs everybody. So maybe we could ask what sort of communications do you have? Is it just local newspaper or are there other official town communications that are pushed out? And so I can work with Parishar on adding that question or something.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you. It sounds like it, it might be once, yeah, good. Good. Thank you. Leslie, I recognize you, please.
Can you hear me?
You're a little garbly, but.
Oh, sorry. Okay. I just wanted to respond to Phil's comment, which just made me laugh because when I was working for Concord in the IT department, I used to write our column for the weekly newsletter with tips from the IT department and little cartoons. This as well. So it, it did exist. I'm not sure that it was sent to the citizens. I think it was just internal. So there was something like that in the past. There is precedent. But I, you know, I think it's a great idea. The other thing is that I'll just mention, I did go look at the Facebook notices today after reading what Kristen had written about them and kind of the, the low popularity of them. And you know, there's quite a few things that are posted there. There's a lot of kind of like we're celebrating pride or there's a new opening here, but it was, that was one of the most surprising takeaways, I guess, that how kind of inefficient flyers and Facebook were. And I'm just going to segue to my, a thought I've had for a few weeks is that if we do want to get younger people engaged, we maybe want to think about something like Instagram, just a thought.
Right.
That's all for me.
Thank you. Kristen Hegarty, please.
Thanks. I would like to think about this bigger picture question I have in my head and how to prevent scope creep, but certainly as I was reading all this stuff and, and from what I've heard from the moderators and also, you know, public comment, especially David Allen. It seems like we have this opportunity to do what we do better and in a more civil way when we're together. But also with more participation throughout the year and, and perhaps that is not going to be able to happen this year. But what I'd like to figure out is, you know, what's the role of this committee in really encouraging the participation all year? So that when we get to town meeting, we say, look, we will give you the shortest town meeting possible, but you have to commit to doing some work before we get there. And, and I want to just kind of understand, you know, does this, does this committee have an appetite to include kind of that, both the, the civility of our deliberation, but also the the request to, to ask people to participate more fully throughout the year as part of this group?
Good. It's a really interesting question. And, and I think I, I have appetite for us to look at big questions like that. Let me just take, take just sort of a sidebar. I mean, I think the idea with the subcommittees was that we would make it possible for folks to miss meetings, right? We had a hard time getting everyone to comfortably join a meeting all on a Tuesday night or all on a, all on a Friday afternoon. And so the part of the idea with the subcommittees was to go, okay, you know, the folks who find it easy to attend on Tuesdays can focus on, you know, it, it so happened that the, it worked out that you could focus on communications and and night of town meeting. And then the, the folks during the business day could focus on what I call experiences. It's both, you know, what the, what what character deliberation are we trying to achieve? What sort of from a public administration perspective? Are we trying to get out of town meeting? And what the public's experience is in terms of it not being too long, not being incivil or uncivil and so on. It worked out tonight that, you know, we had everyone, almost everyone. And so, so the idea of sort of a logistics themed subcommittee, especially, you know, because, because we had contributions from Kristen and Katie as well, didn't quite work out, you know? But so I just want to call that out. I'm still trying to figure out how to make that work better. But the goal that was to, was to elicit where folks sort of in the, the night meeting would be think, would be, would be focusing their work for the next little bit. And I think, I think we've got that. Actually, Eric Van Loon, I have an ask for you. If, if I may, and frankly, I don't know if you're sort of the day person or a night person, as it were. But I specifically would like to understand the picture at the state level, the state legislative level around this issue of moving to get a representative, a remote town meeting approved. There are a number of towns that have made requests to, to have that approved. Wayland stands out. And I, as, you know, a regular Joe, as it were, just don't understand what's going on with that. I know that we could make a request through the town manager's office to have town council produce an explanation or, you know, a, a, an assessment is sort of what's going on. But I, I wanted to ask you specifically, given your background, if that would be a task that would be interesting for you to look at, if you'd be able to make headway on that?
I can certainly jump in and probably get a pretty good update in a relatively short period of time. In the context that I am going to be out of the country for the better part of the next month. So
Sure. It's, it's not time critical. It's really just a matter of lining up your, your intention with that problem.
Yes. And, and my focus, I'm, I'm wanting to come up with a a list of items that I believe would all be within the discretion of the moderator.
Good.
But kinds of things that could make it, make town meeting feel more efficient, less less, less time wasted, if you will.
Sure.
The two other questions that I'm not sure whether they're on our agenda or not, is whether we want to have to address the question of representative town meeting explicitly in some way in what we do. And then the other big picture question is this was, again, a proposal that was a warrant article that was deferred to us, the idea that we'd have grand debates at town meeting. But none of the votes would really matter because we, the whole town, we go to the polls a couple of weeks later and the actual vote of all the voters that turned out would be what the policy of the, of the town becomes. I've, I've got fairly strong opinions about that.
Sure.
And candidly, I'm not sure how much discussion it takes or, or whatever. But I guess there's the question how you and other few committee members feel about our obligation to devote energy to that since it was a warrant article that got deferred to us.
So I can answer that. We're obligated to take a look at that. I have not scheduled, so to speak, any time on that. I think a preconditionist, this is feasible at all. I think Carmen's comments about that proposal in the, in her interview on the bridge for the moderator election are actually pretty interesting. I would actually go back and start there. But no, I think we're obligated to take a real look at that. And I just, I'm not, I'm not really sure when. I think if, and, and part of understanding the picture at the state level, understanding articulating either the judiciaries, quote unquote, where the state's interest in both an in-person town meeting and synchronous deliberation. I think if, if we're able to identify where they're really about with that, that will help us approach the question of, of the Australian ballot or whatever it's called. And frankly, Eric, I'm sorry, I forgot your first point.
Well, the, the other one was and they have forgotten it also.
Sorry. We can come back.
Representative town meeting.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you. Alice Kaufman is, is, is doing some, some research into that. I think, I think I may not be correct to characterize it as a due diligence investigation, but, but she is interested in understanding more about the, the, the outcomes from a representative town meeting. Is it really more representative and so on? So, so, yeah. Leslie, I see your hand up and Diane Proctor, I see your hand as well, but let me go to Leslie first. Did, did, you're on mute, Leslie. Did you have something? Uh, no.
No, I'm sorry.
That's okay. All good. Katie, I see you and then I'll go to Diane Proctor after that. Okay?
Sure. Yeah. So I have two items. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be signing up for additional items today or not, given my daytime assignment. But two things I was thinking about is one, I am interested in, in the idea of seeing if we can measure how representative the How representative the attendees are, and I know Eric, you signed up to do something like that, I think, at the last meeting, which I was absent. Um, so was going to volunteer any support you need on that, um, whether, you know, combining data sets or whatever.
Yeah, the agenda for the seven nine daytime meeting is all about data.
Oh, excellent. Okay, so I'll save that from there. Um, and then another item I was thinking about too is maybe starting to catalog in a table format. Like the different issues and or solutions that we have been talking about, so we do have them in one place. So when we are ready to make decisions about things, we can go to that and have that be a, a guide, perhaps. If we, if the, if the group thinks that might be uh valuable.
Great, thank you. Uh, thank you. I'll say from my part, uh, with respect to uh operations and communications, uh. I, I'm pretty interested in understanding more about the capabilities of the content management system. That Concord and actually many Massachusetts municipalities are using. I'm blanking, it's, I'm just blanking on the name of it, but, but Civic Plus, I guess it is, is the name of that platform and familiar with uh. Uh, uh, something like SharePoint or WordPress or whatever. It's a content management system. Uh, that the town is using to publish over, and I'm particularly curious about what capabilities. May, they may offer uh in terms of threaded discussions, uh, in terms of support for surveys. Uh, just in general, what the workflow is like uh in terms of publishing. So it's a little bit of an overlap, I think, Keith, between your, your area of interest. Um, but my, my interest is really more technical. Uh, uh, what, what capabilities are there to support the kinds of things that I think will help us? Uh, in terms of uh, 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 um. Hosted discussion uh and other, other ways of seeking information. So that's, that's in terms of the logistics side. I think the, the. With respect to the experiences side, there are two themes that uh I'm interested in, in pursuing. Uh, one is the data analysis around participation and representation, uh, both in terms of the data that's available to us right now. Uh, in terms of data from past studies, but also I think the, the surveys, the survey designs that we'll wind up doing, I think will in part emphasize. Uh, trying to understand what the, what the data in hand can't tell us. Uh, and I know it's abstract, but, but the data analysis and the, 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 the survey design kind of go together. Uh, and then uh, uh, obviously I've had a big interest in sort of this, this vision of a, a different visions of a, perhaps a radically different town meeting. So those are the, those are the things I'm working on. Diane Proctor, I'd like to give you an opportunity for a commoner question, please. Two minutes, please. Thank you.
I don't need two minutes at all. I just wanted to say that while it's always wonderful to have Eric do research for you. Um, I'm sure Simon Katalda, um, or Carmen Gentile would be more than happy to speak to the committee about the process. Uh, that the legislature undertakes to try to work something like um, the, the um voting process through. Uh, and I, I think they're both pretty well versed in it and I, I bet either one of them would be happy to join you, so that's all I was going to suggest. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Uh, Eric, I see your hand.
Yeah, my plan had been to talk to Simon, so. We're, we're in the same wavelength.
Okay.
I possibly uh save a little time by uh talking to him, asking a bunch of questions and. Then summarizing it for the committee.
Great, thank you. Um, David Allen, I'll recognize you as a member of the public. Two minutes, please.
Thanks. Um, as we know, I've been at remote participation for. A year short of a decade, do you not be surprised? I've been a little bit involved in what's going on at the state. Uh, David Carr and I were on the Zoom. Whoa, what's going on with that audio? Uh, wait a minute, silly Zoom, sorry about that. Um, David Carr and I have been on Zoom with Simon and Carmen Gentile. Um, and myself, I was on a Zoom with uh people across the state, uh moderators and. Uh, folks who see the state as a whole. Uh, will take more than two minutes to tell you about uh what's on there, but uh. I'd be uh delighted to help uh to the extent that that's useful, certainly uh. Be delighted to get into harness with Eric again to do such a thing. I've got another bit, it's probably gonna take more than my two minutes, uh, so maybe I'll come back.
All right, thank you. Um, Eric, can you work with David? Uh, and uh, just coordinate a bit and then I think the question would be. You know, uh, what, what you feel uh would help, be helpful for the committee in terms of a presentation. Uh, given, given your initial, your initial evaluation, is that okay?
Absolutely, and David worked on a variety of things through the decades, so.
Cool, thank you.
And we are. Clan them and know each other well.
All right, thank you. Um, um, I thought if, I thought I saw a hand, but I guess I don't. Um. So at this point, we've gone through, uh, I think everyone uh has talked about what they're working on. Both in the context of the, the logistics theme and the experiences theme. Uh, uh, we've conducted our business for the meeting as well. Uh, is there anything else that we want to talk about before we close or are we good? Um, so our next meeting uh will be on the experiences theme. It will be uh Tuesday. Uh, two P M on uh, uh, July ninth. Uh, we'll run for up, upper bound an hour and forty-five minutes. Uh, Shannon already has the agenda out. Again, the focus is on. Uh, what we've seen in past studies, uh, what we, what judgments we'd like to make with respect to. Uh, participation and representation, uh, and then as well, what the, what are the consequences in terms of data? Uh, information seeking for potential surveys. Uh, there was something else on there as well, but um, yeah, discussion around uh just. How do we brainstorm about uh, uh, you know, visions for an ideal town meeting? Uh, David, I see your hand raised. Uh, um, is it quick?
Uh, it doesn't have to be here. I just have to write the damn thing in an email if I don't do it here.
I'd appreciate that, actually, if, if you don't mind.
I'm glad, glad to.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Um, so I'm gonna say that we are ready to conclude the meeting. And with that, I'll say thank you to everyone. Uh, um, and uh, uh, we're done. Thank you. All right, everyone have a good fourth.
Thanks. Good night.